In order to achieve their goals.
Counselor Hammond?
Your worship, thank you. I'd like to direct my question Heather, to you if I may. I'm trying to get a better understanding, as the deputy mayor did, about the rezoning application. And maybe we can walk through this very simply together. The I-8 zoning application that was there, did it expire when that trailer was to be removed in the 18 months? Or is it still with the property?
Through you, your worship. The I-8 zoning currently still applies to the property. It permitted the uses allowed under the institutional, the regular I category, institutional, as well as the temporary office trailer. The office trailer itself, as a permitted use, expired in February of last year.
Okay, my question's kind of multifaceted. So, in walking through this, and so in order to operate the current building, it needs that I-8 designation, correct? Yes?
Yes.
Okay. So, if the property then, if it were divided in two, this would be much simpler, wouldn't it? Because then we could have residential in the back and the zoning that would currently stand in the one in the front. But we don't. So, we're looking for residential in the back with an I-8 designation, which is already there to the building that you're currently using, correct?
Through you, your worship. I would, yes.
I'm not trying to put you on the spot Heather, I'm just trying to get a better understanding.
It's the residential component of the development is to be in conjunction with the institutional. So, one doesn't happen, the residential part wouldn't happen without the institutional part, which is already permitted.
Okay, so I think I'm getting that a little clearer now. So, just one follow-up question if I may. This rezoning application would apply, would it just apply to the current property owners, meaning building bridges? Or is it something that down the future, God willing, it doesn't happen, but if they decided that they were going to close this and move into a larger facility, would that designation then apply to that property forever? Could someone else use it and get the same designation?
Through you, your worship. The use that is being proposed by the applicant would stay with the property. However, I, it would depend on whether a new owner could satisfy the definition that is proposed to be added to the zoning bylaw for a youth engagement center, as to whether or not someone else could operate some, a facility.
Okay.
Like this.
Yeah, thank you, thank you worship. Thank you Heather.
Counselor Wilkinson?
Thank you, worship. My question is for George and John. It's maybe not so much a planning question, forgive me, but I'm going to ask it since they brought it up. It's in regards to your funding component that you talked about. You received grants and you're, that's going to fund your capital and you're going to be raising funds for your operational, is what you're saying. Now, the funding that you have received, is there any component to that where you have to, you've got aggressive numbers here where you say over 100 youth per year annually are going to use the facility. Let's say you're wrong with those numbers. Let's say it comes out to be 25. Is there any sort of component in that funding where the funding may dry out and so lesser services will be provided inside your facility?
All right, I'll try to answer that. First of all, the funding that we've proposed is private. The fund that we're, the fund that could come to us, the only condition, while the main condition is it has to be operational for 20 years. So that, if not, then we would have to pay back some of that debt. Now, when we, the rest of the funding that John has already talked about, that is will be the services. It's not based on 100 or more, it's just based on providing it when the youth come to our community. So, as you say, it may be less, but it also could be more. So, no, that's not there. The, part of the ongoing sustainability concept is, if the rooms are empty, it's a greater challenge for our team to come up with the money to keep the facility open. But as long as we keep that, those rooms available for minimum 20 years, then that fund or grant that we would get is gone. We don't have to worry about paying it back. If we choose to use it somewhere else, depending how soon in that 20 years, then we would have to pay that portion of the grant back.
One more questions then. I'm with you Counselor Burick, oh, I'm sorry Counselor Jacobs. I just want to say my piece here though. I'm, I'm going to hold my questions to all of you until I've heard from the public because they may get answered as we go along. Counselor Jacobs, you had one more?
Yes, thank you worship. It's along the lines of the public. I guess what I'm looking at, and some of the fear, which I'm sure you hear is from the general public or the immediate neighbors of the proposed, is the fact that, what type of individuals will be coming into the area? How are we going to monitor them? And what type of authority would you have in place to patrol that? In other words, would the individual have the authority, if there was a situation that took place, to immediately evict someone or to ensure that, I guess undesired activities are taking place within the facility? And I think this is, in speaking with some of the neighbors myself, I think this is where the fear is coming in and, you know, where the gray area lies with this. And is there a way? I know you say that about 24%, I think was in your presentation, that you said we're local individuals that required assistance when you made that in. And are they Leamington people or are they people from Windsor, from Chatham, or from wherever? I know that's a multitude of questions I just wrote to you, but, you know, I think to dispel some of the concerns that are there, I think those are, those need to be answered.
All right, again, I'll try to answer them. Remind me if I miss a few of them. So, we don't know which the guest will be. The only thing that we can go by is those that have come either to the schools, to access, or other agencies. One of the concerns that we've heard, and we've heard many concerns from the community, is it going to be a drug rehab or something like that? We are stating that, that will be beyond our scope. We will though have partnerships and refer them to either Brentwood or whatever facilities that they'll most appropriately fit into. But with those that stay with us, there's also a concern, what will stop them from making this a hangout place, a party place, drug-infested, crime-infested place? So, we will have agreements and that will be one of the primary roles that Maria will be working on when we work with the end of Windsor and a lot of these other facilities. They've already done the homework, because there are different rules or agreements we can make them sign up with when they're in our, we can use the word program, compared to just making it a residential component where someone is signing at least to stay with you, where it is harder to evict someone. Because they'll be signing an agreement with us, then we have greater rules and what they can and can't do and therefore if they overstep any of those boundaries that would affect safety, not only for other guests or the community, we could then ask them to leave. I don't know if there's any other questions, sorry?
Well, that's where I guess I was going with it. If you, if you spot something immediately, let's say that there's drugs, you know, for lack of a better term, that's taking place. Whoever's monitoring that and is on a 24-hour basis while they be there, would they have the authority to come up and say, "George, you're out of here." You know, like, not a week from now, not two weeks from now. Do we move that apple from the barrel before it spoils the rest of the barrel?
So, to answer that, yes, we would have the authority, anyone of the volunteers, trained volunteers, or staff that would be on the 24-hour surveillance team when needed. Again, we don't know, there are some unknowns. If there was to be a violent situation, obviously we'd be contacting OPP. If it is a situation of drugs or night guests, there will again be security that we can call or individuals from the team that would come in and deal with it and then make that decision together, whether they get removed immediately that night or the following morning, depending again the time of the day. But all our volunteers that will be in the surveillance side of things will have that ability to either call OPP or the director or access themselves, depending what component they're, because again, it's somewhat, many things that could happen with it, I guess.
Deputy Mayor?
Just one word answer is all I need. Zero tolerance for drugs and alcohol?
Yes, there will not be anything allowed on that facility.
Okay, so I now want to open this up for public discussion. So, Jackie, I'll ask you to vacate your chair. I want you two gentlemen to stay there though, because there might be points made that we will want you to address if you can at that moment, so. Yes, okay. So, opening this up to the general public, we've got the two chairs here, one microphone. When you approach, I just simply need your name and your address. And we do have a standing rule that you only have five minutes to present to council. Try not to go over that. I'm usually pretty lenient, but I, there's a number of you here tonight, I don't know how many want to speak. So, we'll try to adhere to that as best we can. And council will be able to ask questions back to you and hopefully these gentlemen can answer questions that you may bring up. So, floor's open, who wants to come first? Please feel free.
Thank you, worship. And council. My name's Greg Enz. I live on 22 Coronation, about halfway up Coronation between Erie and Shirk. The reason that I wanted to speak today was to talk about really execution of this, of this youth center. You know, we've met a number of times, George was gracious enough to meet with myself and my wife and we went through and asked questions. Our biggest concern is the, you know, some of the things that we haven't really talked about. The presentation's awesome and I believe everybody's intentions are whole. It's the what-ifs, it's the, you know, the person that doesn't want to get help or maybe wants to get help and then doesn't want to get help and then wants to get help and doesn't want to get help, that's, that is inevitably going to be, going to a place like this. And then the behavior and the issues that come out of that from a drug standpoint, from a mental health standpoint, can have an effect on the local neighborhood. And, you know, being a father of young children, you know, my job is to protect my kids. And, and really that's, you know, my wife and I, that's our main concern. I do understand and admire the cause and I admire the fact that there's a need, I do, from what I've gathered, I admire that. But as far as, you know, how this place is operated and what you're allowed to do is what I'm concerned about. You know, I believe that there can be rules put in place, but it's going to get to a point where, you know, does, does the person there, does the waiver, what does the waiver cover? So, those are questions that I don't have answers to, that to me, you know, give me concern. You know, having, having a place like this within the neighborhood, in my mind, my simple mathematic mind says there's a greater risk to something bad happening. And that's just because there's more, an opportunity for some, someone to have a bad day, to, that's, that's got some issues. And, and we, you know, I know that organization, organization would do everything it can to control that, but if, you know, person gets kicked out at the middle of the night and, you know, is walking down the street, or where do they go? How does that, you know, potentially, do they, do the, do the police get called every time? There's just a number of issues that in my mind can, can bring risk to the neighborhood and bring risk inevitably to, to my kids. You know, I believe that the most important person in this whole effort isn't here today and it's, it's the director of operations, which you don't have yet and I understand it's early, but, but that person, that would be the one to ask, "How do you handle these situations?" And then we don't know who that person is. Is it going to be somebody experienced? They would, you know, you would hope that they would be able to tell you, Counselor Jacobs, you know, what, what are they allowed to enforce? I don't know. Can you tell somebody that they can't have people over at their house? I, that to me, I don't know if that could be covered in a waiver. And not knowing gives me, you know, concern. In regards to, you know, funding, that's another issue or concern that I have, is that I believe the team's intentions and efforts are admirable and are, you know, positive. 10 years down the road, you know, as people move on or if, you know, let's say, you know, governments change or from a funding standpoint, if funding dries up, I understand and understand how, you know, things can go poorly and that, you know, you just can't operate the way you want to and then issues arise. So, so there's no doubt that my comments are fear-based and typically I'm not fear-based. But at the same time, you know, I feel that the, the risk of this going poorly is something that our neighborhood just can't, you know, tolerate or can't put up with. You would not want to raise your family or I wouldn't want to raise my family in a situation like that. So, I am not dismissing the fact that there's a need. I'm just, I'm just concerned about the execution plans that I haven't heard.
Okay. Before you leave, are there any questions from council? Okay, gentlemen, do you want to try and address these right now or?
All right, we'll try to answer some of them. We had talked about some of these already. So, obviously, as I mentioned, we don't have this director of operations yet, but it is based on the research, I listed a lot of those organizations. They have these already in place that meet the legal and/or provincial status where you can remove them. We didn't bring them yet because this is moving fairly quick to the point of actually having it up. We still have many months. They have also volunteered to give us all those documentations and research that they have where we can just personalize it to Leamington, confirm that there's no changes to it, but it does address the issue of removing the high-risk youth or young adults from the community. So, these partnerships, as I mentioned earlier, agreements are different than your landlord agreement that you would have in general place. If there's ever a fear of danger, no different than today, these youth exist in our community already. These youth are roaming in our community today as well. So, what do we do with them? We will now have a whole community working together, a lot of volunteer churches, a lot of agencies, as well as 24-hour surveillance, which is better than anything else that we offer in Leamington today. So, we do believe it will be a safer, better place, not excusing that there are concerns, but not that it will be left unaddressed. We can definitely not argue the fact there's unknowns because every individual will be different, every year, every situation could be unique, but at least we have a better approach with having a multiple people working together instead of allowing an individual agency or one person trying to take this on. I think that will help eliminate a lot of the risk. Funding, as I mentioned earlier, will be more based on private, so we understand governments change, the funding goes away. We'll take advantage of the public funding that comes out now to establish and get as much things going, but we will make sure that our plan first, you know, keeping it ongoing will always help keep at least the housing component in the center open and when we get public funding, it'll obviously just offer a lot more than if we have just the private funding coming in. And that plan will be shared as it develops in the next few months of where the long-term funding or in the capital funding will be separated.
Just further to the funding question, because I certainly respect Mr. Enz and his concerns and would certainly share them as a resident of the neighborhood. Our funding at access and the funding of our community partners that we want to draw into the center is not dependent upon the center itself. Those fundings are for programs that already currently exist. What we want to do is provide the center where we can engage the youth with those particular programs. So, that's why we can rest assured it won't be a fly-by-night operation because those organizations have been around for the better part of 20, 25 years and will certainly be around 20, 25 years from now unless we're lucky enough to put ourselves out of business by, you know, removing some of the social lills that we're dealing with. So, the bottom line is, you know, I ran a youth center in the county, another municipality, for 17 years. The rules were very simple. No booze, no drugs, no sex, respect yourself and each other. And there was a zero tolerance policy and anytime there was an issue, those individuals were removed from the premises immediately and we plan on following the same statutes with this youth engagement center.
Okay, thank you very much, Counselor Hammond?
Your worship, thank you. I'd spoken to Greg on two or three different occasions and Greg is the, I think, the spokesperson for the neighborhood and I think their concerns are genuine, you know, I think that, and it's not just in not in my backyard. I think his, their concerns are, are out there that ever, all of us would have if something new was happening in our neighborhood. And I think at some point, they will be addressed as, if it does move forward. To Mr. Bergen and Mr. Sutton, I want to compliment you on your presentation tonight, that was, that was great. In the, in the event that this rezoning application is successful, my recommendation would be first of all, that you bring someone from the neighborhood in as part of that planning and development part of that, because they have some real input into that as to the barriers and some of the other things and the lighting and all of that that take place as you move forward. But more importantly, I think the message that's been sent here this evening is, the future or the, or the success or failure of this, building bridges, lies strictly on the people you put in place to run it. So, my recommendation would be, let's make sure that if it moves forward, that we get the proper people and it's done in a, in a good manner that we can be proud of down the road in the future.
Okay, thank you very much Greg. Anyone else in the audience that wants to address council? Please feel forward, come forward. I just need you to turn the microphone on.
Is it on?
Yep.
Okay. Sharon Johnston. I live on Parkdale Avenue, which is on the other side of where this is being proposed. Last night I went around to some of the neighbors. I, at present, have 21 signatures with concerns about the project going forward. Basically, again, it's the security, it's how it's going to play out. We're well aware of what goes on at Wybells Motel, concerned that that will be the same thing in our backyard. When you're talking about security, even, even university students who are in residence have security onsite.
Sharon, if I could have you just keep speaking to the mic. If you address us, they'll definitely hear you, so.
Okay. So, kids who are even older than this, at university and attending residents, have security onsite. When you're talking about security here, are you talking about cameras, 24-hour surveillance? Are you talking about actual security people onsite in case there's issues? You know, we have, we have sleepovers, we have drugs onsite. The concern is that things aren't going to be addressed in a timely manner and because we can, we're not really sure how many people we're talking about, how many youth. If you're talking 100 youth in one, one area, it's difficult to control 25, let alone, you know, kids in a mask like that. It's, I agree, there's, there's certainly a shortfall in the community and our concern is for our neighborhood. So, we are asking, the signatures on here are asking for a maximum height fence that's secure and also private. And that would be on all three sides of this area.
Okay. Maybe it's a petition that you have?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And maybe you could just leave that with Lucy over here and we'll have that information on hand and we can share it with the proponents. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council? Counselor Wilkinson?
Heather, could you give us some sort of idea what a max height fence would be?
Through you, worship. I don't, I don't know what our, our fence by law permits. Danielle's here tonight, I wonder if she might have an answer to that. Sorry Danielle.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. Typically, our fences are restricted, there's a different height for residential and for commercial. Fencing on the residential properties are typically what we're looking at. And so, because this is institutional, we'll be able to assign a fence height through site plan control. So, the maximum would just be what's appropriate. So, again, you're not going to want a wall, but typically we're looking at six-foot fences in the residential area.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Jacobs?
Thank you worship. I wanted to ask Sharon a question there, but she sort of left the desk, but, sorry. You really aren't, are not opposed to this, you're just concerned about the security aspect of it, is that correct?
What, what this actually said, this petition was, that we are opposing the zoning bylaw if there is not a maximum fence.
It's basically a fence that's your?
Six feet wasn't what we had in mind.
Then I guess Danielle just clarified that for us, it could go higher.
We would definitely want it higher, otherwise, yes, all 21 are opposing.
How high would you want it to be?
It's the old saying, the one with the highest fence is the best neighbor, I guess.
They provide good neighbors.
Any idea, suggestion of a height? Are you talking eight feet?
I'm going to throw out eight feet.
Eight feet? Okay. All right. Again, so if you don't mind leaving that petition with Lucy?
I will.
Okay. Thank you very much. Counselor Hammond?
You comment, Mr. Mayor, yes. We're sitting on a committee of adjustment, we have found, Sharon, again, you're running away, but if, if you, through discussions with the landlord next to the Circle K on Seacliff Drive, he was, he was very adamant about the type of fencing and the height of the fence that he wanted as well. And again, through planning and development, if, if you're a part of that process and you could be, you'll have some input into that. Planning and development talks about the height of the fence, the amount of lighting, the green space, what shrubs are put in, so you could have some input into that. So, my recommendation would be to go down to the Circle K and look at the fence that was erected between the property owner and the Circle K there. That'll give you some kind of an idea about what can be done.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, are there any more questions for Sharon while she's here? She's not running away.
Yeah, I'm waiting.
I think we're good. Thank you very much. I know there were a couple other hands that went up and Larry and then over here.
Yeah, my name is Larry Deck, I live next to the Lutheran Church on Seacliff Drive. I guess I know why it's called a youth center, because it sounds, it sounds pretty good, but we're talking about high schools and all this and that, but we've got, when I went to high school, I think you were 17 when you're out of high school, right?
Been too long, I don't remember.
Unless you're really dumb, right? Okay, so, now we have 18s, 19s, 20s, 21s, 22s, 23s, and 24s. We haven't discussed this. Be nice if they went to high school during the day or whatever, but we know those guys can't, right? Secondly, I guess my question is, this gentleman here says no sex, no booze, no drugs. How do you address smoking? Is smoking onsite? Can you smoke in the apartments? Can you smoke on the, on the premises around the school or your outfit? Can you smoke there?
Smoking would be pursuant to all the applicable laws and bylaws similar to any other organization.
So, what are the laws? Can you have a smoking area there outside the center?
Again, if we apply for it, yes. A lot of the centers have a designated outdoor smoking center, so again, it's under surveillance, not in a private area.
My, my point is that when I was 16 and 17 and 18 and 19 and 20 and 21 and 22, sex was important, cigarettes were important, alcohol was important. The more successful these folks are and the bigger the fence is, they're going to come outside the fence. They're coming out, like if you want to meet your girlfriend and she's not allowed, if you want to have a smoke, I hope there's a smoking area, I hope there is onsite and I hope it's not in front, in the front yard. In a way, I wish they would have the alcohol and the drugs onsite, because I know, if I, if I were living there, I would, I would be going to the neighborhood, I'd go to the churchyard across the street, I'd go to the front yard of the guy down, down the street to, to do that stuff. I mean, that's pretty human nature, isn't it? So, these folks, if they're really good at their jobs, half these kids will want to not be on a Saturday night sitting in, in there. They'll be out on our street, in my, in my opinion. The other aspect is, they talk about trying to keep these rooms full and you know what? And you know what? They, believe me, they won't have any problem keeping them full. Even if we had three kids in this area, once Windsor finds out they've got some rooms for their folks, these folks will be, those rooms will be full. And you may or may not end up with a 24-year-old gnarly Windsor dude that nobody's going to be able to talk to, and I am a little concerned of that. It's not just 16-year-old kids that are a little lost and they're having a problem with their mom and dad and they leave home. My heart goes out for those guys. But 22, when I was 23 and 24, I don't know. I have a problem with this. This youth center is not youth anymore. When was the last time that you heard somebody that was 24 was a youth? And in that regard, I'm concerned of the neighborhood and I don't think your property value is going to go up. And I don't know if they'll go down. I can't say that, but I know that it's not, when you concentrate, you say those kids, they're in the neighborhood now. They're in Leamington now. Yes, they are, but they're not all in one spot. It's not all the focus, meet me at so-and-so. And you know what? I think a youth center is okay and I'd be all for it. The residential scares me because these folks, you're going to end up with 12, 15 guys that are going to live there and somebody raised it tonight. What are you going to say to these guys? They're having the music a little loud or they're going to have a party or whatever. I don't, I don't think you can control it 100%. And we don't have a problem in our neighborhood now and I certainly hope we don't if this proceeds. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from counsel? Nope. Okay. You get off free, Larry.
Well, what do your kids do now? And they can't smoke and they can't see girls and they can't, what do they do now in their, in your centers that you know about? Do they leave the site? Sarnia, they canceled one of these things because the kids were all outside, or not just kids, these were adults. They basically pulled their license because they, of the loitering, you know, if you can't smoke, if you don't have a good smoking spot in behind, they'll be out front smoking. And we've got situations in our town now where you drive by and you wonder what the heck's going on or all hanging around on the street. And that's, that's not good. Do you have an answer for that?
I can't answer what the youth will do in our community because we don't have a center to relate to at this point, but when we went and visited some...
You're trying to do good, but you're looking for a problem that doesn't exist.
Larry, Larry, if you can address the questions of counsel. You guys aren't having a debate here. This is our meeting, so...
Never mind. That last one was, it was to this gentleman. I mean, you're looking for a solution to a problem that I won't say doesn't exist, but my God, it seems like overkill for me. I mean, we should take care of our children and I agree with that. These other fellows, I'm not so sure, or ladies, I know they need help, but not in my backyard. I'll say it.
So George, if you want to, or John?
Well, part of our, this was a big concern, why we visited so many different facilities. First of all, again, the youth part, it's an age dynamic that all the communities are using. So it's not just high school. They are young adults, but a lot of these high school students, if we can, and that is the goal, to get them to go to school, we also would like them to go to college. A lot of them are going to Windsor, whether St. Clair or University of Windsor. They want to keep them in our area so then that way they could still remain a residence in the community as well. And others, they just need a little further assistance. Not everyone has a sound home to grow up in, so at 18 or when you finish high school, depending on your academics, you're not always ready to go in the community. So that is definitely a concern that, why all the agencies go further. One of the things that we heard that was very encouraging in the earlier stages when we visited is this is their home. They do a lot of self-governing in this facility. It isn't just where it's a shelter where everyone comes, it's a free-for-all, do what you want. When you have a program-based system, they treat it as their home. They were amazed at the amount of self-governing. They have very seldom, but they do have to call outside help in once in a while, but because it's their home, they don't want it to be a bad place. They are, they're leaving a bad situation and that's why we said it's our goal to make this a safe place where they can be loved and also have hope. If that, if they don't take care of it, they won't have that in our community.
Okay, thank you very much. So other questions from members of the audience? Okay, Counselor Wilkinson?
George, John, maybe you could, to expand on Larry's one concern there, if he thinks the rooms aren't going to be filled, there's going to be 100-plus there. Let's say the crap does hit the fan during the middle of the night, you know, and, you know, civil war breaks out inside this place. Talk about your kind of strategy that you have in place at that point to handle a situation like that that might make Larry feel a little better, you know? Have you discussed the worst-case scenarios that might happen? And maybe have you talked with our local, what involvement does local PD have here, our police department?
So the local police department, we've been dealing with, as I mentioned, with OPP. So they, we feel that based on our research, there isn't that much need for OPP. Again, worst-case scenario, the 100 youth were experiencing homelessness throughout the year, not that all 100 would be homeless at one point. As you've seen in our layout, we only have room for 11 transitional and 13, so we're dealing with maximum 25. So we do believe there will be, there will be full, but they will never be dealing with 100 or 50 or 60 of residents in the middle of the night trying to create problems. So that's why we've started smaller to see how it works before we go big. We feel, as it was mentioned earlier, having the right partners in place, the director is obviously vital, but we believe there'll be more than one staff as well as the professional partners that we're partnering with.
So one staff would be in there during 3:00 AM? Something goes wrong, there'd be one staff, two max?
Yeah, in the, like, the center will be closed. It'll have community hours, right? So whether it's going to be 8:00 or 9:00 o'clock, it'll be closed. And so then we will have what you call a security or staff, just in the, it'll be first of all, cameras as well, but also just at the door, just so that guests aren't coming or are expected to leave by a certain time. Guests will also be staying in common areas, not in bedrooms. We have common area in that phase too as well for that reason.
Step forward, whoever.
Gary Player. I live at 21 Coronation. My backyard backs onto this facility. My beautiful backyard, from what I'm hearing tonight, is gone from a nice green space to a virtual armed camp with lights and eight-foot-high fences around it. This is nonsense. This is a community where most of the people that live there are senior citizens, one-floor homes on Coronation, people come from Toronto, they buy their homes. Two have gone up for sale within the last month. Lady said it doesn't impact the community. There you go. Talked about a 12-foot-high apartment building. Would that be better? Yes? Well, at least the city would get some remuneration from the taxes. They're not going to get anything from this. This is nonsense in this community. They're talking about putting a basketball court adjacent to an apartment building that has 80% senior citizens in it. It's not going to fit in this community. Ask yourself this question. What I like to have in my backyard, and I'm talking about counsel, a building which houses 55 at any one time, that's what they told us at the public meeting, 55 people, up to 24 years of age, some with drugs, some with alcohol, some with mental problems roaming around in your backyard. Would you like that? That's all I have to say.
Okay, questions from counsel? George? John?
Excuse me, you're asking me to answer that question?
Well, I didn't really hear a question other than would I like it in my backyard. But it was a criticism and I want you to take a shot at it if you can.
Well, obviously that's been a concern of ours. We believe that when we talk again with these agencies, they're applauding us that we're willing to take a preventive action. If we don't deal with the current dynamics of these young adults or youth, we're going to get a lot more escalation of these youth where they will be on the streets, where they will be doing a lot more activity in the community. And so we feel that this is a proactive approach to deal with the amount of problems that other cities are experiencing. If we take care of it now, we won't have to deal with the extreme cases later. Again, the fear we're hearing and when we met with the neighbors and continue to hear from them is that it's, they're focusing on that these will be the highly drug use, we're not going to be doing drug rehab in our facility. Those youth will be asked to go with professional sites where they'll deal with that. They know how to deal with that. That won't be happening in their backyard. It won't be happening in our community because currently that's not what this facility is being proposed to be. It will be a much safer place, a community place, that will have a component where they will be able to be housed that's under, as we mentioned, 24-hour surveillance. I just don't see that it will be what the worst-case scenario is going to be based on the comments we've heard tonight.
Okay, thank you very much. Yes, ma'am.
I, my name's Marilyn Fox and I live at 27 Coronation Avenue, right behind the church, backing onto the church. I'll try and remain calm. I'm so upset about this whole thing. We moved here a couple of years ago and love the area because it's peaceful, safe, quiet, wonderful neighbors, a lot of seniors and some young families. Not only our street and area, but the park, Seacliff Park is close to us and we love going there. We feel that this is going to really majorly change everything. And I just want to say, George mentioned one thing when he was first speaking that I picked up on. He said that there could possibly be a fence to protect the people, the young people, as well as keeping the community safe. And I thought that was an interesting comment because that is a concern, not just the fact that this is right behind us, virtually in our backyard, but I'm worried about the area around us when these youth are off the premises. There's nobody watching them or following them. For one thing, is there drug testing? Would there be drug testing? Because I've read, I've done a lot of research on homeless shelters in areas and I've read about needles being left on the streets and all kinds of horror stories. Not only am I worried about the seniors and neighbors, I'm worried about even having my two-year-old grandson come to visit. I mean, how safe is that going to be? How will it be going to the park? That's my big concern, that the, I guess the major thing here is not only the supervision at the center, but what about off the center? Is there any guarantee? Of course, there's no guarantee that kids might gather and attract other young people that are using drugs or alcohol or whatever, abusing them, and it just changes the neighborhood and makes it dangerous.
George?
So to address some of the concerns, that's the difference between a homeless shelter and/or a resource center. So we are willing to, and I have asked that after this process is through, to have a neighbor join us. We would love to hear feedback from the neighbor. If there's gatherings, we'll gladly address it. There are many volunteers coming on board that would love to address any of the concerns. But on the contrary, we're hearing that when it's a, a lot of the kids that are in the heavy drugs or in the crime, this is not a place they want to go. If they're looking to create trouble and they have all the rules and regulations, that's a lot of times why the kids want to leave. This will not be the place where they'll be gathering. However, in a homeless shelter where you're just allowing any and every guest come in, it's very common for that to happen. And that's why we've been very strategic to make this a resource center that will have partnerships of all levels. And when you say drug testing, when there's any doubt, if we, obviously captioned, like we said, zero tolerance onsite, but when there's doubt, that's why we've partnered with the hospital. We, again, wouldn't have the tools or equipment or professionals to do so. We will then have them working with those students or young adults that we want to call that would be, I guess, in the gray area or any concern. And it will require our community to work together. This isn't a one-person approach and that's why we keep saying we're so happy that we do have a large group of people volunteering and partnering with us from the community to make this a center, not a shelter.
Questions from counsel? See none? So then, next person wanting to address?
I live at 23 Coronation. The concern about the smoking thing, we all know secondhand smoke is not healthy for you and you're going to let people smoke in the backyard and the wind's going to blow it over into our neighborhood because we're right behind them and my quality of life is going to suffer because of that and along with a few other people. We all agree that secondhand smoke kills you. I quit smoking 25 years ago for that reason. I don't need somebody in my backyard blowing smoke over the fence while I'm trying to enjoy my property.
Okay, questions from counsel? I don't know if that's an addressable issue by you guys or not, so...
The only thing that we've learned by visiting facilities, it would be, it wouldn't be on the fence side, it would be more in the middle of the property and it would be a fenced-in area, as I said earlier, with surveillance so that you can keep an eye on it because that's where you have a lot of migration when it's, you know, an area that it can get escalated if possible. But it would be in the middle of the property. I can't address how much smoke will go over. I'm just not an expert on how far a smoke travels and still affects. I understand if it's indoor and in a house, obviously, but on outdoor capacity, being in the middle of the property, I don't feel it would be that big of a concern by the time it reaches a backyard of a neighbor or anyone else.
And certainly, we are going to follow both the tenants of the county and the municipality in terms of your own smoking regulations and bylaws, which you've enacted to protect the residents of Leamington, and by all means, we will fully cooperate with those.
Okay. The smoking regulations that they're talking about, that doesn't apply to us. It'd apply, you go to the arena, the Sherk complex, they smoke there and on your way in, you smell smoke, but there's no residents that are being affected by it. We're going to be affected by it. And the other thing, while we're on the subject of security here, I was a policeman for 30 years. I'd like to see what kind of security that they're going to have 24/7. They're not having it. He just said it himself, you call somebody. Well, if something happens and I have to call one of these gentlemen or whoever's on the board, how long does that take? No, that's not security.
Okay, so to just touch on the smoking thing, if another developer were to come along, knock down the church and put up multi-use housing in there, we can't restrict them from smoking and the same thing's going to happen, so...
Okay, but we're dealing with these people. We're not dealing with somebody else. So let's not play this game.
Not again.
There's people in that apartment building across from us that are elderly. They can't sit out on their balconies now because some kids are going to be in there smoking their brains out? No, this is, I totally object to it.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Next person?
My name is Reverend Sylvia Swatoszczik and I am the pastor at St. Paul's Lutheran Church. We also received a letter since we are within the 400 feet. I think I reside in the only residence that is on, that has a Sherk address, which is 311 Sherk. And if anyone has ever been by our building, St. Paul's Lutheran Church, you know it's on the corner of Sherk and Seacliff Drive. The members there take great pride in their building. We are now in our third and fourth generations of people who invested labor, hand labor that built that church, and there are still generations of those families still today. They take great pride in their property, which is over two acres. They have the same concerns as all the residents here. If people want to go off-site somewhere, we would be a natural place because we have a huge property there. But with all those concerns, counsel has given me permission, counsel of 12 that minds the business of the church, has given me permission to speak for them, to totally endorse this project. We are fully in favor of this project and we are hoping that counsel will encourage this project to continue, even with the sleeping component. We think it is worthwhile to our youth. It takes the shame out of being homeless. Many of these youth could be on our neighbors' couches and they don't even realize it. Parties and things like that can happen in our own neighborhoods. neighborhoods if you remember just last weekend Easter weekend we had a terrible event at near Plum Brook and Southbridge these awful occurrences of violence could happen anywhere in our communities and in a time of anxiety and anxiousness about our safety we want guarantees it is human nature to want guarantees but this is life there are no guarantees but we fully back this project we hope it goes forward we look forward with partnering with this group this is an underserviced group in our community our youth a lot of lip service is given that they are our future how do we want to treat our future do we want to see them leave this community or do we want to nurture them in a residential area where it's we see you we care about you we want you in our midst and we are hoping to give you a hand up as we give those who need hospice care this is a caring community that has been a trendsetter in how do we help our citizens this is going to be a project that is going to be viewed from many many municipalities I have done some work in my training to be a pastor and viewed lots of homeless shelters and youth centers and from this is from three years ago less than 20% will reuse a facility most of its residents are there less than a month it is that helping hand from the community to get them on their feet to be productive citizens I thank you for your kind attention and I encourage you and pray for you in your decision making.
Thank you very much questions from council? No, thank you very much. Please just come forward.
Good evening your worship and members of council my name is Debo Weigle and I live at 28 Grace Avenue in Leamington I was born and raised on 30 Melrose which is just a few steps away from this church St. Joe's was the church that I was that I grew up in and I'm a part of the steering committee because I truly believe in what's going on here I truly believe in wanting to save the youth of this community it's not every youth of this community that's going to need the services that we are going to provide it's not every youth that we can service as George and John have been saying we will not have the resources for the ones who do not want the help but before anything I am a mother in this community I have two children one who is 15 and attends Leamington District Secondary School one who is 18 graduated from Leamington District Secondary School and is now in his first year of university and if I had this center for every time my children came home and said mom Bobby doesn't have anywhere to sleep tonight because his mom and dad won't let him in the house he's such a good guy mom or mom Cindy doesn't have any food can I bring extra food in my lunch or mom about all the different stories that I have heard over the five years that I have had children in high school attendance this center could have helped and saved all of those kids unfortunately I think that there is being a shadow cast on the type of kids that are coming here these are kids who want help these are kids who want the hand up these are kids who want to be productive members of society and we as a community center want to give them that opportunity not so many years ago the town of Leamington provided a service similar to this there was a program at the shirk recreation complex called leaders and leaders in training of which I am very grateful for I had a mother who worked full-time afternoons and was not available for me as a child growing up and had it not have been for the services that the town of Leamington provided for the youth at risk in our community to be able to develop themselves as leaders and productive members of society I might not be sitting here in front of you this evening in support of this wonderful venture I just want you to think about that as you're making your decision tonight and I want to be here tonight to actually defend the youth of our community because they are great people I work with them every day in the high school as a council chair for Leamington District Secondary School they do wonderful things we want to enhance their lives and make them better thank you for your time.
Questions from council councilor Jacobs?
Thank you worship so you're a counselor at the school?
I am the parent council chair of Leamington District Secondary School.
Okay, so maybe you can answer a question for me then.
I'll try my best.
The numbers have been thrown around of the ones that need this type of assistance that's gone from 100 to above and below and could you sort of narrow that down through your experience then because I would I would look at you as I guess as a-
I'll do my best and I wish Mr. Burrard Kyle Burrard was here from the high school he has a better handle on it I can tell you about the numerous stories that he's told me and the stories that my kids have told me and while I can't give you a figure of 100 because it's not strictly the kids that are coming from Leamington District Secondary School there are kids from Cardinal Carter there are kids from the private schools there are kids from the Kingsville community and Wheatley community it's not just our community but we are wanting to serve the greater community but I can tell you a story of a young man who lost his mother and had nowhere to go and the school tirelessly worked with the neighbors of that young man to find him someplace to sleep after his mother died and he had no family had this center have been open that center would have helped that boy to get on his feet and get a leg up in life fortunately for that young man one of the neighbors did take him in but that's not a success story for everybody I can't tell you the countless times I myself have sent money have given money to the school have sent food have provided clothing have dropped off clothes in the principal's office when they have said it when they have come to me with a need how many times I have provided gifts at Christmas for kids who don't have anything this is a real problem in our community and we're just proposing a solution so we can make the situation positive.
And I guess the reason I ask you if you had an idea of an of a number is the fact that a lot of individuals of myself included were unaware that there were this many young people in trouble or in need of assistance and I think that's where some of the difficulty lies because the numbers that you hear the comments that you receive are there's no way there's 100 kids in this town that need help you know there's all kinds of money in this town there's all kinds of food in this town so you know I guess I'm I was taken a little bit back by by those types of comments but then it becomes more apparent that there is a need for what these gentlemen and yourself are trying to put forward.
Well, I think George and John touched on it and perhaps Pastor Ike might come up here and speak to it we Leamington District Secondary School started a program along with Deer Run Church and actually because Deer Run Church came to Leamington District Secondary School and said what are the needs of your school community and how can we help and Kyle Burrard and Ike Unger sat down and identified a serious nutrition need how many youth are coming to school without any food without any breakfast and are not able to function in their daily lives because they don't even have that one basic thing which is nutrition in their homes and it's surprising that we are in and Ike correct me if I'm wrong our third year we are in our third year of this program and instead of it being an every other day program it is an everyday every morning program and now has also turned into a lunch program it is not just for breakfast anymore so the need is definitely there and and if I could say one other thing as I was thinking about it deputy mayor McDonald you had addressed the issue as far as what how does this affect the area as some of you may know I'm also a local Realtor and I do care about our local market values in the research that I had done with the fellow colleague in real estate over and we researched all the places in Windsor over a 10-year period from the beginning before they were created as centers for youth and up to now all of them all of the areas and Jackie does have the statistics that we were able to research all of the areas realized an increase in market value that was consistent with the-